Councilmember Diaz?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Trent, Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson just in the jury.
Can we get a motion to adjourn us for please? Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Meeting of the Fortuna City Council, if you'll silence your electronic devices will join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Diaz?
Here.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
And we have three proclamations today. And I'll read the first one for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I believe we have someone here to receive this. Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2025. Whereas, April is annually recognized as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And whereas, sexualized violence affects children, youth, adults and elders of all genders from all racial, cultural and economic backgrounds with public health and social justice implications for every person in Fortuna. And whereas, staff and volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour emergency response services to survivors and their significant others and believes that prevention and intervention are essential to a healthy community. And whereas, no one person, organization, agency or community can eliminate sexual assaults on their own, but can through collaboration and partnership work together to support those impacted, improve responses and ensure that survivors are not revictimized. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Fortuna reaffirms its commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and its values. Heal, to help survivors by meeting them where they're all at, empower them through their healing journeys, affirm their choices, listen to and believe their truth and acknowledges that April 2025 has Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This day, 7th day of April 2025, City of Fortuna, Mike Johnson, Mayor.
You might have.
Nice to meet you, nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much.
If you'd like to say something, this is your time.
So I just have a couple of words. My name is Maria Sepulveda. I work with the North Coast Rape Crisis Team as our bilingual specialist. We would like to thank the Fortuna City Council for supporting and your ongoing support of Sexual Assault Awareness Month as well as our agency. For over 50 years, our agency has worked in this community as well as Del Norte, providing free services that include a 24-hour bilingual hotline, support through law enforcement, evidence collection exams, as well as providing financial assistance for survivors and their families. This past year, we have provided over 599 survivors in Humboldt County with support. And these services are available regardless of when the crime occurred. A significant part of our service population in Fortuna does include Spanish-speaking survivors. And so our bilingual crisis line and services ensure that language is not a barrier to receiving the care and support that these survivors deserve. We would like to thank our community partners, so law enforcement, District Attorney's Office, sexual assault nurse examiners and tribal organizations for their continuing support of our agency. We do see that with these looming financial cuts, they would prove detrimental to the services that we can provide to survivors. And so it is possible that, you know, it might affect the amount of work that we're able to do. And so we do need your help to ensure that survivors continue to receive the care they deserve. And if you are interested, you can visit our website at ncrct.org to make your voice heard with our state and federal representatives and support our ongoing fundraising efforts. Thank you again for supporting our work and I can answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have our second one for National Animal Control Officer Appreciation.
In recognition of the National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, April 13th through April 19th, 2025. Whereas, animal control officers provide an essential service to our community by ensuring the safety and well-being of both animals and residents. And whereas, these dedicated professionals enforce animal-related laws, rescue and protect strays and abused animals, investigate cases of animal neglect and cruelty and educate the public on responsible pet ownership. And whereas, animal control officers often face challenges, danger and emotionally demanding situations while carrying out their duties, demonstrating remarkable courage, compassion and commitment. And whereas, the National Animal Care and Control Association has designated the week of April 13th through 19th, 2025 as the National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, recognizing the tireless efforts of these professionals in protecting animals and enhancing public safety. Whereas, it is fitting that we take the opportunity to express our gratitude and appreciation for the dedicated service of our city's animal control officers and their contribution to the health and safety of our community. Now therefore be it resolved, it's for these reasons that the City Council of the City of Fortuna wishes to honor them and proclaim April 13th through 19th, 2025 as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Fortuna. The City Council of the City of Fortuna appreciates their commitment and dedication to their profession and encourages all residents to join in recognizing and thanking our animal control officers for their invaluable service and unwavering dedication. Signed this day in the City of Fortuna by Mayor Mike Johnson.
Good evening. On behalf of the department and our animal control officers, thank you for the proclamation and the recognition. They do an incredible job keeping our community and our animals safe. And we definitely applaud them and thank them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our third proclamation. In recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 13th through the 19th, 2025. Whereas, emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire or emergency medical services and public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the single vital link to our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Fortuna Police Department Communication Center. And whereas, the City of Fortuna is served by a group of men and women working as public safety dispatchers for the law enforcement, fire, rescue and medical emergency response agencies in this community. And whereas, these dedicated individuals work tirelessly to answer our citizens' call for help and dispatch the first responders to the scene of those emergencies. And whereas, these public safety dispatchers have demonstrated loyalty, commitment and dedication in the performance of their duties. And how therefore be it resolved that the public safety dispatchers working in the City of Fortuna are a valuable asset to our community at large. These professionals who toil with little recognition 24 hours a day, seven days a week to save lives and provide assistance are unsung heroes. Be it further resolved, it is for these reasons that the City Council of the City of Fortuna wishes to honor them and proclaim April 13th through the 19th, 2025 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Fortuna. The City Council of the City of Fortuna appreciates their commitment and dedication to their profession and congratulates them on a job well done. Signed the 7th day of April, 2025, at the City of Fortuna in the state of California and witness thereof the Seattle, Fortuna.
On behalf of the department and our public safety dispatchers, thank you for the proclamation and the recognition for the job that they do. Our dispatchers are definitely the calm voice in the chaos. They're there for us. We're honored to have the outstanding public safety dispatchers that we do. And we're definitely grateful for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, at this time, we've come to oral comments from the public. For any item that is not on the agenda, you can come forward, speak in three minutes. Is there any oral comments from the public today? Seeing none, we'll move now to the consent calendar. We've got a variety of items here, a number of minutes from the March 17th meetings, the March 19th meeting, a report of disbursements, road maintenance and rehabilitation account project list, authorization for pay of the position of the police lieutenant, approve appointment of interim public works director and a general plan and housing element progress report. Does anybody wish to pull anything?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Thank you. So we will move to our first order of business. A public hearing to consider adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation and monitoring and reporting program in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and approval of the 12th Street Interchange Modernization Project. The staff report, I believe.
Excellent, yes, thank you honorable mayor and city council. So I am very pleased to be here this evening to co-present an item that staff have been working on, not just for a number of years in this project phase, but for, you know, darn near two decades at this point in an effort to ultimately modernize the interchanges in the City of Fortuna between our local roads and the state right-of-way, the state highway. So I will be pulling up a presentation that I will be providing. And I am assisted here this evening with a few very key members of our design team with our consulting engineering and environmental consultants, GHD, and that's Josh Wolfe and Andrea Hilton. They are two, as I said, key members that have helped bring this ISMND together and also the project design documents of which we'll also be discussing some this evening. So, as you noted, Mayor Johnson, the first and major item that we have in front of us is considering the environmental document. This is the approval that staff are seeking at this point to certify our compliance under CEQA. And the other item would be to approve the project as it stands at this point so that we could move forward with the next phase of work when it becomes funded. So for everybody in the audience and also participating via the telecast. The intersection we are speaking about this evening is the city's 12th Street intersection with Newburgh Road and the northbound on and off ramps with Highway 101. As shown generally here, so you'll see a zoomed out vicinity of the City of Fortuna within the red circle is generally what we would consider our 12th Street interchanges. And I will note specifically our project and moreover the funding that was available for the project was obtained in order to advance the preliminary design and environmental for what we would call the north side of the interchange. So this would be the area in front of Clendenins and additionally the area as the overpass goes over Highway 101. So these projects came about some time ago, probably in the early 2000s. And pretty much the issues that were identified at that time are the same ones that exist now. So this area currently offers limited to no bike and ped connectivity over the freeway or in the interchange areas themselves. They're somewhat confusing and they're composed of non-standard geometries that were driven by design standards of a long time ago. In addition to the railroad right-of-ways and the old Newburgh Line Railroad that used to go through that area. Right now, the non-standard geometries make vehicle turning movements and safety a little bit less than you would desire in today's modern world. And there are a number, there's an accident and a collision history at that intersection that specifically in front of Newburgh is about twice the statewide average. Lastly, the level of service, which is a measure of how long a vehicle generally needs to wait to make a turning movement at an intersection, that is very low and is only projected to get lower. And during peak times, the westbound Newburgh turn movements get very congested backing up all the way, you know, in as far as the residential neighborhoods along Newburgh. So a few photos here, just to help illustrate the area we're talking about. Again, in the top, you'll see a photo taken from in front of the Clendenins parking area there. Looking over the interchange showing the railroad right-of-way that moves through there and what was formerly at that time Tom Sourdough. You'll see on the south, or the south, the bottom of the slide, you'll see three photos that are kind of a comprehensive view of the existing overpass. And as was standard for that time, there's no real bike and ped facilities, there's no real wide shoulders or no otherwise safe way to access one side of the freeway to the other. So moving on to the project goals and objectives, or the project goals and objectives and some of the previous efforts that have led us here. So kind of the overarching design and project objective we have is to improve traffic operations, including congestion, queuing and a level of service at the 12th Street intersections. We want to improve safety for all users, be that motorized or non-motorized at the intersections. And we also want to improve the local and regional bike and pedestrian facilities, recognizing that the 12th Street intersection presents a very significant gap and constraint in that network. We've been working on this project for a number of years, as I noted, beginning in the 2010 City General Plan, moving through our John Campbell Memorial Greenway Master Plan, our 2016 Complete Streets Study, our 2022 Project Study Report and our 2021 Local Road Safety Plan. So I referenced the 2016 Complete Streets Connectivity Study. This was the first effort that was done in the city's interchange projects that really set both of them on an initial path with a preferred project alternative. So as an inter-agency coordination project that was facilitated through HCOG, the city participated in a project that looked at how the Kenmar and 12th Street interchanges specifically could be reconfigured ultimately to provide complete streets access across the freeway and through the interchange areas themselves. You'll see here on the left is a great You'll see here on the left is a grayed-out version of what is kind of the existing configuration there with the non-standard geometries. You'll see in the upper right, an early signalized improved, intersection improvement that was looked at as part of that study. And in the bottom, you'll see the five, the bottom right, that is, a five-leg roundabout alternative. Ultimately, the five-leg roundabout alternative was selected to move forward as a preferred alternative, and that's what staff has moved forward with to obtain funding and is the subject of the project being brought this evening. That was the preferred alternative at that time as it is now, based on cost largely. Roundabout is significantly cheaper than the capacity and lane improvements that would be required for the signalized intersection alternative. It also performs more suitably into the future as well. It provides a better level of service and less queuing for a longer period of time. So going on to our current, our current project effort, and this really is condensed to the last few years since staff have been working on this particular phase of work. So in twenty twenty-two, staff submitted for and ultimately were successful in obtaining about a million dollars in funding from the State Transportation Improvement Program. And with that funding secured, the city entered into a cooperative agreement with Caltrans. Given that many of these improvements, if not most, are on the state highway system, the city has to enter an agreement with Caltrans in order to act as the project lead with Caltrans oversight. Once those two items were in place, the city released an RFP in March of twenty twenty-two, and in the end of twenty twenty-two, that work was ultimately awarded to GHD. As part of the last couple of years, as this project has been going on, the GHD and city team have completed over twenty design and environmental-related project deliverables. Those have all been compiled and are the subject of this evening's discussion as part of the ISM and D, and some of those are a portion of what will be included in the project report, which is the final deliverable due to Caltrans at the end of this work phase. Additionally, as part of that, in twenty twenty-four, we have already received concurrence from Caltrans on our thirty percent design or what we call also our geometric approval drawings. So I did want to note to the council that Caltrans has seen the plans that are associated with this project, and they have provided their concurrence on those plans. And then lastly, of course, we're here this evening to discuss the environmental document, which is the ISM and D or the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, which is one of the major components of the staff report item here this evening. So that is kind of a tee-up, so I'm going to pass it over. Now we've gone through kind of the overview of why we're here, so I'll pass it over to Josh Wolfe, who is our project manager, who will walk through the design itself and kind of paint a picture of the project we're proposing out on Twelfth Street.
All right. Thank you, Brendan, and good evening. Again, my name's Josh Wolfe. I'm a project manager and civil engineer with GHD and happy to be here tonight to present you an overview of some of the design aspects of the Twelfth Street interchange project. But I want to start off first with just talking about some of the key project constraints associated that the project design team had to overcome. So starting first here, this is just an aerial image of the project area. This is looking in the southwest direction, so you can see Newburgh Road is at the bottom of the screen and US one oh one towards the top of the screen. So one of the first, you know, key challenges is there's just a lot going on in this short segment of road. While it is a somewhat rural road, it's a very busy section of a rural road. So within this six-hundred-foot section, there's a number of things I want to point out. First off is the Newburgh Road intersection. I think you all are very familiar. It's a extremely skewed intersection, actually comes in at around a forty-degree angle, which is one of the most severe skews that I've come across and certainly one of the most severe for an intersection of this magnitude. It's further complicated with the Great Redwood Trail Corridor or former North Coast Railroad Authority Corridor that runs through the project area and the remnant railroad tracks which run right through the intersection as well. Just to the south of Newburgh is the Clendenins Cider Works facility. Now, Clendenins is obviously a very old business in town, very, very important, not just to the city, but to the community at large, and it really predates the actual highway and the intersection as well. So accommodations to Clendenins were a key aspect of this project, not just to maintain access, but to look for opportunities to improve it where we could. And just a little bit more further south, you have the Pond Street intersection. This is another really unconventional intersection. It's actually two separate intersections, one with Pond Street and the northbound off-ramps and another with Pond Street and the northbound on-ramps and Twelfth Street. And while it is a small road, it's also vitally important as well. It serves the Sequoia Gas Parcel and is actually the only access into the Sequoia Gas Parcel. So you can see Sequoia Gas is actually landlocked more or less by the Great Redwood Trail Corridor as well as Highway one oh one, so it was vitally important to maintain access through Pond Street. And then further east on Newburgh, you have the former Palco Mill Site, which obviously has a really tremendous development potential, so the project had to make accommodations to ensure that it was compatible with future use of that mill site as well as maintaining and improving access. And if that wasn't enough, you also have Highway one oh one just south of, of Pond Street as well. One oh one bisects the community, as Brendan mentioned, cuts off the Riverwalk area from the downtown area. Its only connection is the existing Twelfth Street overcrossing bridge, which Brendan pointed out is very narrow, lacks adequate shoulders, has very low railings on both sides, and lacks any sort of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So it was a key aspect and a key challenge that had to be overcome with the project. Also want to just briefly talk about some of the design standards associated with a project like this. So this is a complicated transportation facility. It's, has a large component of it, is actually located within the state right-of-way, so we do have to adhere to both Caltrans and federal design standards. For this project, those include the, the Caltrans Highway Design Manual, as well as the Federal Highways NCHRP, Publication six seventy-two, which outlines design standards for roundabouts. Within these documents, there's a whole host of standards and criteria and analysis that are required, looking at things like various design vehicles, design speeds and fast pass through the intersections, stopping sight distance, viewing angles, truck turning movements, bicycle and pedestrian safety, and much more. On the right side of the screen here, you can see this is an example, just one of the many analyses that we had to run. This is actually a truck turning analysis using a software called AutoTurn, where we actually look at the vehicle paths and the turning movements through various intersections. Example here is actually for a semi-truck and trailer, but we also have to look at other design vehicles, including a forty-five-foot bus, which is really a large coach bus, as well as in the bottom right there, you can see, we call that an oversized overweight design vehicle. That essentially is the largest permitted load that Caltrans would allow in their facilities. We do model that as well to ensure that it can make it through various movements in the roundabout. All right. Now I want to talk about some of the key design features associated with the project. So this is an aerial of the project area for orientation. North is pointed to the right, and then the white-colored line work is what the proposed improvements are. And I'll start off by talking about Newburgh Roads. So one of the key aspects of this project is to realign Newburgh Road. So currently, Newburgh Road right at Sunnybrook Road, under existing conditions, it actually arches more or less to the, to the north on a, on a curve and then connects into its current location. What the project proposes to do is realign Newburgh starting at Sunnybrook Lane, so it goes more or less dead west and then connects in with that triangular area, which is the existing intersection with the ramps and Pond Street. Existing Newburgh would remain, but it would be converted into a dead-end road, so it would continue to provide access to the existing residential uses along that road as well as the residents on Meadowbrook. Access to the mill site is maintained and actually enhanced, so instead of the sort of unconventional driveway that exists there today, an actual formal intersection would be constructed opposite of Sunnybrook Lane in order to provide access into the mill Pond Street would also be realigned, so as I mentioned, currently Pond Street connects in just about with the, the end of the northbound off-ramp. With the project, Pond Street would be realigned to connect in with the new alignment of Newburgh And in addition, a secondary connection would be made to the planned or expected future road that would be constructed as part of the mill site development. So you can see this is a new connection that would actually cross the Great Redwood Trail Agency Corridor and then make a connection into that future road on the mill site. And the project is more or less anchored with a new five-leg, single-lane roundabout located right in the middle of that triangular area again, near the existing intersections. And in addition, there would be a multi-use path or a non-motorized path intended for both bicyclists and pedestrians. It would extend all along Twelfth Street through the entire project area, will actually cross over the highway and then terminate on the south side of the highway right near the Dinsmore, Dinsmore Drive intersection with Riverwalk Drive. And I'm going to zoom in in this area here, talk a little bit more about some additional features closer to the intersection. This is that same area, north is still pointing to the right. I'm going to start off by looking at some of the features around the Clendenins Cider Works property. In the bottom left, there is an image showing what existing conditions look like today. One of the first improvements we were, we were able to make was actually to shift the road further east from its current location, so Twelfth Street actually is going to be pushed further east away from Clendenins. This creates a little bit extra room for us to do some additional improvements and adds a little bit more buffer between the Cider Works area and the actual roadway. Again, looking at that image in the bottom left, you can see for northbound traffic, there's no left turn lane for anyone who wants to make it into Clendenins. They essentially have to wait in traffic, stop in the travel lane, wait, wait for a safe passage for vehicles in the southbound direction, wait for a gap, and then make a left. Under the project, proposed project, we were able to add a two-way left turn lane, therefore vehicles heading north could actually get into that median lane, wait for traffic to, to provide an adequate gap and then make a left, so that's a great safety improvement. In addition, I mentioned that there'll be non-motorized trails through the area, so there would be a pathway that would be extended through the, the frontage area in front of Clendenins. Under existing conditions, again, you can see it's just kind of a sea of asphalt, there's no clear delineation between the roadway and the actual parking area. So there would be a trail that'd be extended through there, and with that, we'd have two separate dedicated driveway entrances to serve the property. Plus, off the edge of the screen there, you can see there's some diagonal parking, so we'd actually formalize the parking in that area as well. Shown in orange here, these are the multi-use paths that are proposed as part of the project. So again, these are non-motorized pathways intended for both cyclists and pedestrians. And I know it's hard to see, but it's actually in red, there is a small segment of the Great Redwood Trail that'd be constructed as part of this project as well. So it's the segment between what would be the new, Newburgh Road alignment and Twelfth Street. And this really is vitally important to the trail project because these are some of the busiest intersections in town, so being able to construct these as part of these, construct these as part of this project really sets the tone and allows for future expansion of the Great Redwood Trail, both north and south. There's also a number of pedestrian safety enhancements that are included. What we're circled here in pink are the various crosswalks that are included as part of the project. These are all enhanced with rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which I know you're familiar with in town. These are push-button activated blinking lights that draw attention to pedestrians that are, that are in the crosswalk or looking to make a crossing, so they're really great safety enhancements. In addition, we'd also include pedestrian refuge islands, which essentially shorten the crossing distance for pedestrians to get across a road. Instead of having to cross two legs or two lanes of traffic, they can cross one leg at a time, so it's a really nice enhancement. And the last feature I want to highlight was the bridge over US one oh one. So as part of this project, we are proposing to include a separate pedestrian-only bridge that would connect the, the intersection shown here to the south side of Highway one oh one. And during the design phase, we did consider a number of different alternatives for this bridge structure, including both widening the existing bridge and constructing a separate standalone bridge structure. During the course of the design and the coordination, collaboration with Caltrans, it became evident that it was going to be quite complicated and costly to widen the existing structure, and that's because there's a number of deficiencies associated with that structure. And essentially, once we made any improvements to it, Caltrans was going to require the city to upgrade it to current standards. So the cost of that came out to about, to around five million dollars compared to what a separate standalone bridge structure would cost, estimated at around two million dollars. So the separate bridge was identified as the preferred option. I'll hand it back to you, Brendan.
Excellent. Thank you, Josh. So here, this is a figure, this is my favorite one to share because it's the one that looks the best and really is just the most interesting, let's be real here. This right here is what we call our landscape concepts, which is one of the initial submittals we do as part of this phase of work. And so in addition to all that stuff that Josh had just talked about, how we're enhancing pedestrian connectivity, how we're providing crosswalks, how we're providing trails, how we're providing amenities to the transportation network as we can, you know, one of the other key features we're thinking about with this project is how do we provide an entry into Fortuna? How do we orient visitors and residents? How do we improve the aesthetics of the area, which, you know, historically has been dominated by power poles and railroad tracks and lights that don't exist anymore, things of that nature? So this, this drawing here just shows some of the opportunity that exists and that we have identified at this point for what the intersection could be made to look when these improvements occur. So as you can see, the center of the roundabout could include, you know, some trees and some landscaping, maybe similar to like what we have at the Kenmar, signalized intersection on the way into town, it could have a gateway sign, there could be other landscape or buffering components for those neighborhoods next to Newburgh Road there that are near the Great Redwood Trail Corridor. There could be other decorative concrete or other decorative features that really just, again, enhance and, and provide a, a brand-new aesthetic and a brand-new feel coming into the city. I will note this, right now is, is, you know, we always start with what we would think of as kind of the pie-in-the-sky approach as we move forward, especially through detailed design, you know, really nailing in both from the city's perspective and the public perspective, but also from the Caltrans perspective, what our appetite is for increased maintenance and, and other items that would be associated with kind of the landscaping and beautification component, that would come to light at that time. So moving forward with that information, this brings us to the CEQA document, which is the, of course, the main topic we're here this evening for. So as I mentioned, the city's CEQA pathway for this project was to complete an initial study, which culminated in a declaration of a mitigated, negative declaration of environmental impact. And this is due to the fact that although some environmental impacts were identified as part of the project, they could all be mitigated to a less-than-significant impact level through the mitigations that are proposed as part of the project. Those mitigations, I won't go through them all in this, in this presentation, but they were included in the packet in the attachment that was the MMRP, the Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program. And I will note, they are all very standard mitigations for this type of work and that have been associated with other projects in the city of Fortuna. So this, this public circulation draft of the ISM and D was fully completed, and on February twenty-sixth, it was circulated, it was posted on the city's website, we sent notifications to adjacent property owners we made, we did some outreach efforts to some of the key stakeholders that had been part of the project, including the Clendenins who were here this evening. And that was posted on the OPR website for thirty days, ultimately culminating with the closure of that period on March twenty-eighth. So that was the closure of the public comment period. With that, after circulating the document and all the attachments, the city did, did receive two comments during what is considered the public noticing period. Those comments were from the Regional Water Board and the Great Redwood Trail Agency. In summary, they were both relatively minor comments, and we have been working with both agency through the development of the project, so it's nothing they weren't aware of. The Regional Board did ask and remind the city to include the existing land use covenant of the mill site as part of the conditions of approval for the project, given that the mill site has some identified potential contamination areas, so the land use covenants that were identified in there, closure of the site would need to carry forward in the city's project, for which we have recognized that. And the Great Redwood Trail Agency was requesting removal of some references in the document implying that all right-of-way is owned fee simple, some of their right-of-way is also in easement, but in any event, the entire right-of-way is under the control of that agency regardless. Next, a few days later, we did receive another comment from, again, another close stakeholder that staff have been working with for several years on this project, and that is from the folks at Clendenins Cider Works. So that, we did end up, we received in time to So that, we did end up, we received in time to include that letter in your packet, so you have had a chance to review. I do have here kind of some of the bulleted highlights or summaries there. I will go through them and provide an initial staff response to them. I would also invite the Clendenon's to come up and speak as part of the item at the conclusion of the, of my presentation of the slides here too, if they would care to engage and provide their public input on it as well. But the main three items that I extracted from the comment letter, the first one is the request to preserve the city capability to provide overflow parking in the area around Clendenon Cyterworks. So as you may have recalled from the photo that Josh had put up a minute ago, in the existing interchange configuration, there are some pretty wide shoulders. There is some opportunity during events, say like the Apple Harvest Festival, for large vehicles or even just cars to park on the shoulder of the road and to take up some space during busy times. The improvements that are being proposed will alter the look of how much available overflow space there is, including kind of a larger grassy field that is currently available for overflow parking that typically gets used on the McQuarters property. That will go away in the current project iteration, but I will note on the staff level that there is an opportunity, and you'll see in this slide here, which is the landscape concept. The rearrangement is basically going to shift what I'll call that no man's land to a new feature located here in the middle of what is old Newburg Road, new Newburg Road and 12th Street. So the reason I bring this up is, you know, this is a valid concern because there is a condition and an ability to accommodate for this important city event that we have right now with the configuration we have right now. And there is an opportunity here, as this project moves forward, to consider the best use of that area. It was a little bit outside of the scope of this project, but, you know, the Great Redwood Trail would love to potentially see something that could maybe act as a trailhead for the trail right there. There could be the ability to provide some additional parking or put maybe a little park-like feature or some other, you know, public-serving feature right there that could serve multiple benefits, including some overflow parking. So just wanted to provide that as some context and something that the council could consider and staff could consider in future iterations of this project as it continues forward. The next is a request that the city support the purchase of a portion of the Caltrans right-of-way, which formerly was part of the Clendenon's orchard. So when the, when the, and my understanding, and Cliff, of course, could speak better to this than I, when the highway originally came in, a good portion of the former orchard and other properties in there had to be purchased in order for the highway to go in. Right now, the Clendenon's are interested in reacquiring some of that grassy area to the south of the existing house there that right now is kind of an extended buffer from the northbound on-ramp. And so that is something that, you know, we've talked about with the Clendenon's from the staff level, and we have communicated that to Caltrans. There's only so much on the staff level that we can advocate for in context of moving the project forward, but that's something that certainly in future work phases, if the council and the community was compelled, they could bring that forward or provide a letter of support or some other mechanism to continue to get Caltrans's attention. Because realistically, because it falls outside of the purview of the project, it would be between the property owner and the state to get that done. But there are some reasons provided that, you know, the council should give some consideration to. And lastly, is the request that the construction avoid the busy season for the Cyterworks, which is August through February. I will note, and I have had discussions with the Clendenon's with this as well, realistically, to get this project done on time and on budget, it's going to more than likely have to be continuous through all the good weather periods of the project. Otherwise, it would probably take three years to complete and significantly more cost at that point. What I will note is with these types of projects in general, what we would always target and what we would always require of the contractors, that they maintain access to all businesses and roadway movements at all time. So they would be, the contractor would be required to phase their work in such a way where even if the Clendenon's were in a business operating mode, customers could still get to access and park at their business. There could be times that there could be some reality in the future that access can be limited or that things could be less than ultimately ideal, given the constraints of the project at that time. Staff could, if we get into that kind of mode, look to do the types of agreements we have done, I will say, in the past, but somewhat sparingly, which is to recognize the impact to a business and to provide some sort of an agreement during the construction phase to compensate them for business loss. So I don't foresee that being an issue at this point, and, you know, we feel like, given where the project is going, that a usual phased construction approach would be doable. But that is an option that staff would otherwise look at as part of the right-of-way phase, a future phase of work in this project. So with that, going over to a quick listing of the next steps. So of course, in front of you this evening is considering approval of the project and of the environmental document. After that, the consultant team in the city would work with Caltrans to make sure the NEPA process is finalized because Caltrans is the NEPA lead agency for the project. The project team would complete the PA and ED phase, which we're ultimately hoping will be sometime in the fall of this year. And with that, that'll close the funded work for this portion of the project. So we would close out the STIP grant with Caltrans. And from there, staff and the community and HCOG will continue to advocate for the project, to do what we can to find funding opportunities, to leverage all of the stakeholders who are involved in this, and ultimately hope to get these key improvements delivered for the city of Fortuna. So with that, that closes out our presentation. And again, thank you to Josh, and we do have Josh and Andrea here that can answer questions as well as myself. So I'll turn it back to the council.
Okay. Before we open public comment, is there any questions or comments from council?
I have a quick one, doesn't necessarily completely pertain to this, but somewhat. Have you talked to all of the property owners that this will impact for right-of-ways and all of that? Has any of that stuff been done yet?
Yes. So the three primary property owners that will have impact during the right-of-way phase are the Clendenon's, the McQuarters, and then Mr. Rizzo, who's the owner of the mill site. We have been working closely with each and every one of them. Staff have had several meetings with the Clendenon's and with the McQuarters to look at some of these options as it pertains to how the driveways could look and what could be done, at least at this stage of the project, of course. So yes, we haven't, we haven't gone beyond that to do any specific outreach to, say, the neighborhoods along Newburg or others that would be adjacent to the project. But everybody that would be involved in a right-of-way decision has been contacted and part of the project development.
Thank you.
But those neighborhoods have been notified about the project?
We notified everybody adjacent to what we would call the limits of disturbance. So we sent out mailers as part of the, as part of the circulation of the SEQA document to everybody who fronts the project. So they have been made aware in that setting. We haven't done any, you know, targeted outreach beyond that at this point.
I note on your drawing of the roundabout and the vehicles that would fit through there, it looked like you had a double-goose-nick, double-decked trailer for hauling equipment. And, because I was wondering, looking ahead, because there's a project both for over 299 and down on 101 to get STA A trucks into Fortuna, and so we have to get them out also. So you've done the turning movement geometry on that to see if it'll handle the 43-foot kingpin to rear axle?
Yeah, yeah. So we did look at the STA truck for that as well. That oversized overweight vehicle I showed you, that, again, that's the very largest permit load. And the reason we model that is not necessarily for access into Fortuna, it's really access on the highway. So 12th Street is a, the overcrossing is height-limited, so it doesn't meet the standard for height clearance on the highway. So in the event that Caltrans needs to bring one of those very, very large vehicles up, think about like, you know, a wind turbine blade or something of that magnitude, they can't actually get under the bridge. So they have to be able to pull off on the ramp, go over 12th Street, and then go back on the ramp to get through. So that's the movement we model with that very large vehicle. But other than that, yeah, we modeled the STA truck.
Perfect. Yeah, that has happened in Fortuna where they've got off the freeway, gone around, and got back on again. All right. At this time, we'll open public comment, and I believe we have someone who would like to speak.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And appreciate staff accommodating us not making the SEQA deadline. But you have this in your packet, but I'm going to read it into the record. So my name's Cliff Clendenon, representing Clendenon Cyterworks. And our business is located west of the 12th Street intersection that's under discussion tonight. And appreciate the opportunity to provide our input. We're very much in support of this project and have appreciated both the engagement and willingness of the city staff to consider and coordinate to help meet our business objectives. And my overarching comment is that the success of this project is also linked to our success. If we can correctly design safe traffic flow and parking, it'll ensure the success of the project. We like the single entry from the north and the single exit to the south from the roundabout into our business with the 60-degree angled parking spaces and protected by a sidewalk. That's market improvement over, you know, existing conditions. There's a few more spaces that we'll be able to develop on site, but we believe there's going to be more area required to safely and efficiently handle delivery trucks, school buses for field trips, and even the Apple Harvest Festival, just the basic vendors and musicians and staff that require to put that event on. Currently, vehicles and trucks can park on both sides of 12th Street. While the roundabout will greatly improve traffic flow and safety, many overflow parking opportunities, as Brendan mentioned, will no longer exist, potentially causing delays, congestion, and safety concerns. So Clendenon Cyterworks requests that the city of Fortuna support our purchase of that Caltrans field to the south of the Clendenon farmhouse. And as a, part of that field used to be part of our farm, and part of it was the Perrin Farm, which we know of now as the Perrin Foundation. But their farm basically disappeared underneath the 12th Street overpass when that was built in 1960. So we believe this field is the solution to ensure adequate parking for our business, but more importantly, to ensure the success and benefit of the intersection project. That field could support employee, delivery vehicle, customer parking on the east end, adjacent to the roundabout and adjacent to our farmhouse. And then the west portion, there could be a small expansion of the apple orchard. And on a related note, the conifers that currently sit on this property shade and devalue our existing orchard. And I'll get a slide up later if I can to point that out. And then in March 2020, we had an analysis for a solar project on our barn from Redwood Coast Energy Authority, and they actually made a deduction of 5% from the potential value of the upcoming photovoltaic panels, just based on the height of those pines and redwoods, which get taller every year. In addition to eliminating any traffic flow or parking issues, utilizing this field could enhance the productivity of our agricultural business and increase agricultural output. Transitioning this field for parking and prime irrigated apple orchard, city, Fortuna, and Caltrans could gain visual and environmental benefits without the maintenance costs that exist right now. And as Brendan noted, and I appreciate that, we would also like to request the construction avoid our busy season, which runs August to February, and we think that's going to be possible to accommodate, given that we're completely closed from March through July, typically prime construction months. So we hope to continue the productive dialogue that we've had with the city of Fortuna for everyone's benefit, and thank you. I would like to see the council, if they could, and I'm not sure the mechanism for this, attach that, our acquisition of that property. And I understand that it's public property now, so it would need to be purchased by the Clendenon's. But I'd like to elevate that to a project condition, if there's a mechanism to do that. So that's my ask.
I'm not sure there is a mechanism for that at this time, but it's noted and it's in the record for this. It's been recorded as public comment.
Yeah, I think, you know, my sense is that the best mechanism to move forward with something like that would be to have the discussions on the city's side for the city's stance in support of that as a, as a, an item to take forward to Caltrans and to use that as a springboard to initiate talks with Caltrans, probably specifically on the executive staff level, the ones that, you know, make decisions more in that area. So I think the, you know, the commitment there would be to explore what that future path is and to, again, decide to what level the city would, you know, has an appetite in participating in that being part of the project.
And there might be a mechanism to write a letter of support for your desire to acquire that, you know. But I don't think there's a way that we could make an attachment to the project itself.
Okay. Brendan, is it possible to pull up the cover sheet of the project where it's? Where's the?
Working through the mayor, of course.
Yes.
I should be better at protocol than that.
I do apologize, this may just take a moment here. I believe this is the picture you're hoping for.
Yes. Thank you. So this is the field we're talking about, just to be real clear. And the Perrin Farm was basically underneath the existing overpass. So these conifers are the ones I was mentioning. And this section of the orchard really is kind of in an atrophy state right now because of the shading. So that's a side note, but also I believe in the project design, the northbound on-ramp is going to cut off part of this, if I recall correctly. So there won't be an awful lot of fields left, but we feel like we could make some use of overflow parking there if that was in any way possible.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I thank you for your working with us and for what you do with the community. Hopefully, to see that continue.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? We'll close the public hearing portion of this.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-06.
Second.
And we'll get a roll call.
Resolution 2025-06, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna adopting a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approving the 12th Street interchange modernization project. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
And again, thank you. It's a big project with a big step forward there. So next is approval of a project study report for the Kenmar and Ross Hill Road intersection improvement project. I believe we have Brendan back on the hot seat.
You do. I'm warmed up, so this will be great. So I'll be sharing another presentation here. Excellent. Okay. So to continue in the, in the hopes of improving all of Fortuna's transportation problems in one evening, I have another item here, which is the approval of a project study report for the Kenmar and Ross Hill Road signalized intersection. So for those of you, just to kind of orient yourselves, and I will use this slide for it because diving into the presentation is kind of more the content. The intersection that we are speaking about is that of South Fortuna Boulevard as it transitions to Ross Hill Road, and then east and westbound Kenmar. So this is the signalized intersection at the south end of town that is at the end of the city's Kenmar interchange area with the city's Kenmar interchange area with US Highway 101. So this project has really come about in the last couple of years. So the initial focus for city staff in leading our transportation improvement projects was to look at the Kenmar and 12th Street interchanges, of course, as we discussed at great detail this evening, but also in previous staff reports and project delivery efforts. But a few years into the Kenmar project, what really came about is the understanding that until we can also make some companion improvements to the Kenmar and South Fortuna Boulevard intersection itself, that that would really limit the amount of benefit that is seen to the city and the citizens through the improvement of the Kenmar interchanges themselves. And again, I'll note the difference between the interchanges being the intersections located adjacent to the freeway itself, and the Kenmar intersection being the signalized portion, which is located to the east along Fortuna Boulevard. So purpose and need, there's very much a need to, as we'll discuss, improve the level of service and the queuing that exists at that intersection, specifically on the eastbound or incoming Kenmar turning movements, in addition to the northbound Ross Hill Road movements, which, if you can think about that, those are both the people coming into town, in the case of Kenmar, and the people leaving town principally in the morning from the residential neighborhoods in the Hampton Heights area. There's also a need to improve intersection safety. So we routinely receive some safety complaints and concerns from citizens in regards to two specific areas, and it also has been featured in the city's local road safety plan, which included a pretty big public outreach component. We're hoping to improve and fill in the bicycle and pedestrian network in and around the intersection. And lastly, we want to advance a project concurrent with or before our Kenmar interchange improvements, which is a big compelling reason for us to move this forward on the staff level, again, recognizing that if improvements were made to the interchange themselves, the amount of overall effectiveness of that would be affected by not having made associated improvements to the Kenmar signalized intersection. So running into the existing issues before we start talking about the alternatives that we looked at. So one of the first things that most people experience is what we would call congestion or poor level of service. Level of service is a measure of how long essentially a vehicle is waiting at a signalized intersection. So currently, most of the movements in the AM and PM peak hour are rated at Cs and Ds, and within a few years, it's projected that the entire intersection will operate at Ds and Es, which are almost the lowest measures you can get at a signalized intersection. And I will note that it is in the city's general plan to maintain intersection level of service to C or better everywhere. There is an exception for this particular intersection to operate at C and D, but even then, we are still projecting that that will further deteriorate, especially as the city continues to develop. We also have excessive queuing issues on certain movements, as I noted, most notably in the AM peak hour, that's queuing going up Ross Hill Road, that's for traffic that's traveling northbound, and that's more specifically for the turning movement that takes you towards the freeway. In the PM hours, and then a lot throughout the day, quite honestly, the queuing as it goes back on Kenmar from the intersection towards the highway can get pretty bad. It routinely backs up to Eel River Drive and sometimes even further during peak times. And then we also do have a small amount of queuing excess violations for our southbound Fortuna Boulevard left. So if you were traveling down Fortuna Boulevard from town, trying to turn up Kenmar and Kenwood. So that's another area where we struggle to get all the cars into the appropriate turning pocket, which ultimately impacts how well the intersection operates. So moving over to some of the safety complaints I had noted, there's two primary ones that we get quite a bit. The first and most notable is for what we call the Kenmar Road slip lane. So that's that little side lane that connects South Fortuna Boulevard with Kenmar Road. This, of course, allows vehicles kind of more volitional access to be able to get right to the freeway as they desire. Unfortunately, given how busy the intersection is, this often results in a lot of near-miss vehicle conflicts. There's oftentimes a pretty significant failure to yield. There's often vehicles competing for the space or trying to hit little pockets of availability or openness in the roadway, and it's one area that we have received consistent complaints and observed consistent issues with people being able to use that in a safe manner. Similarly, ever since the two lanes were removed from southbound Ross Hill Road, which is going up the hill, there was a little merge lane that was left to allow the two lanes from Fortuna Boulevard to go through the intersection and merge on the other side. This has created, although overall a great project, what the exact configuration with that striping has done is made so cars routinely kind of, I guess I'll say, compete each other, trying to go through the signalized intersection, getting into Hampton Heights. And it ultimately has, again, created kind of an unsafe condition, especially as it is interfacing with the right turning movement on Kenmar Road there going up the hill. Going to bike and ped facilities, so what you'll see in the dotted lines here, more to the left of the circle, those are the existing bike and ped facilities that we have through the intersection right now. And as you can see, they're somewhat limited to connecting along Ross Hill Road and Fortuna Boulevard. We don't really have any type of good connection to take people from the Hampton Heights or the Kenmar neighborhood across toward the freeway, which would ultimately provide access to the Kenmar interchange project improvements when those are constructed. So in order to address the various problems that we've identified with the existing intersection, I should say, as part of the project study report, we looked at three distinct alternatives for how we could address and make project improvements in the area. So the first is what we call our minimum build intersection improvement, or the signalized intersection retrofit. This would be a pared-down project from an overall total reconstruction that would be focused on providing the improvements to solve some of the bigger problems that we have at the intersection right now. The second is what we would call a maximum build, or a complete redo, which is a new signalized intersection. And the third is a maximum build, or a complete redo with a new roundabout. So just some detail here on the first alternative, which is, again, the signalized intersection retrofit. This project would be geared towards taking care of the worst problems that we have. And going down the list on the left here, in the associated magenta lines you'll see on the figure, which are the new improvements that would be associated with the project, this would add one additional inbound lane on East Kenmar. So right now, there is a combined through-left lane that comes into town, and then a right-turn pocket. This project would add a dedicated through lane, in addition to changing the existing to a dedicated left lane, so we could fit more cars in at each given time. Additional improvements would be to eliminate the slip lane and ultimately bring vehicles trying to get the freeway going down southbound Fortuna Boulevard all the way to the signalized intersection and take a right turn at the signal, like is a pretty conventional arrangement with most signalized intersections. It would include an eastbound Kenmar bike lane that would add to the bike and ped facility connectivity in the area. It would also add a sidewalk. Right now, some of you may notice, as you go out there, we have two crosswalks to that median island where we have the welcome sign, but the crosswalks end at the grass. There's no way to convey pedestrians from there. This would establish a sidewalk to take folks over to the shoulder along Kenmar Road. And lastly, we would modify the signal timing and phasing, and also extend the southbound left-turn pocket for South Fortuna Boulevard for that movement that turns up Kenmar and into the Kenwood neighborhoods. As far as how the engineering modeling looks, this particular alternative would improve, it won't necessarily improve the intersection's level of service or the wait time. What you'll see is through the design life, it really just, what it does is it extends the life of what we have now. But the thing I will note that you see is a notable improvement in the bottom table is, right now, our vehicle queuing gets upwards of 500 feet for the Kenmar interchange side at PM peak hour. This would cut our queuing over in half. So we could solve with this minimum build project alternative the worst of the queuing issues and the safety issues that are present out there at the intersection currently. The next project alternative is what we'd call the maximum build, or the brand-new signal. So if you can imagine, this design approach would be to think about the whole area as a brand-new opportunity, and how would you build it to meet the current and projected traffic loads as a signalized intersection. So as you'll see, this project alternative, which, again, is drafted here now in blue, would include all of the improvements as shown in the previous alternative, which is the pared-back version of a signalized intersection improvement. But it would also add to it an additional southbound left-turn lane on Ross Hill Road, or not left-turn lane, a through lane, excuse me, in addition to a northbound left-turn lane, which would make two lanes of traffic able to make that turning movement toward the freeway in the mornings. Additionally, there'd be a new lane on westbound Kenmar, and then bicycle and pedestrian facilities would be made at all portions of the intersection to accommodate all individual users for all movements. Looking at the modeling, this project alternative would actually slightly improve level of service now and into the future, and it would also provide the same queuing benefits, but expanded as the minimum build alternative, because this would also include improvements to westbound Kenmar and northbound Ross Hill Road. So this would be the signalized intersection version of taking care of all of the issues we have now and accommodating for them into the future. The last alternative we looked at is the roundabout. So of course, that is a topic, a lot of folks are looking at roundabouts, both in the Caltrans world and in local agency world these days. And there's a reason why, we'll get to it in the subsequent table to this figure. So this alternative would include basically demolishing and reconstructing the entire intersection into what I would call a one-and-a-half-lane roundabout, and I'll talk about that more here in a minute. So it would be a roundabout that mostly fits within the complete paved footprint that exists at the intersection now. If you were traveling eastbound or westbound on Kenmar, or southbound on Ross Hill Road or South Fortuna Boulevard, it is effectively a single-lane roundabout, like we are proposing at the Kenmar interchanges and like we are proposing at 12th Street. What you'll see here in the little Zoom picture in the bottom is why we're calling it a one-and-a-half-lane roundabout. I'm sure Josh has a better word for it, I'm happy to have him share if he would like to, is that to accommodate the level of traffic that we do get from the Hampton Heights neighborhoods into the future, we would need to have two lanes provided for two sets of cars to enter into the roundabout, and then have more of a dedicated designated lane for a vehicle to get to the freeway going through the roundabout, and then one also to continue northbound along Fortuna Boulevard. So again, a little bit bigger, a little bit more complex than a single-lane roundabout, so certainly felt compelled to bring that to the council's attention as you're looking at and considering these alternatives. But this is still a very conventional design approach, and they do exist, you know, in a number of places all over the state and all over the country. There just doesn't happen to be one here in Caltrans District One that anybody has experienced. And again, going into the traffic operations, again, the roundabout really solves a lot of the level of service and queuing problems now and into the future. This is the design year, and as you can see, the intersection level of service are As and Bs, where the signalized intersection alternatives were Cs and Ds, and the queuing is next to nothing, even at the peak hours. So I know that was a lot of information, and there's a lot of alternatives, and just something to help kind of paint the picture and to help share how staff are seeing the project alternatives, we put this table together in the staff report, which compares the three alternatives for improvements by cost, level of service, queuing, safety, non-motorized access, and design life. In general, the minimum signal build alternative is ultimately the lowest cost, with the roundabout being somewhere in the middle, and the new signalized intersection being the highest. So I will say these are planning-level cost estimates for project delivery, and this is where it stands right now with the amount of information we have. But in essence, the minimum signal build is a project that is relatively achievable within the funding mechanisms the city would conventionally have available for it, which is the STIP and other local funding and paving dollars. The new signalized intersection is significantly expensive, and the reason for that huge jump with that project is because two areas in particular, going up Ross Hill Road and going west on Kenmar, they have a lot of environmental constraints. There's the hillsides there, there's the creeks on both sides, there's a significant amount of improvement and/or creek realignment and retaining structure that would need to be built as part of a project like that. And because of that, even though it may not look like a whole lot bigger than the minimum build alternative, you're getting into some very expensive design and construction considerations. And then again, the roundabout being that it mostly would exist within the existing paved footprint, is somewhere in the middle with cost. So there's not kind of that extra detailed structural or structured design that would be associated. Level of service, we already touched on it, but the minimum build kind of extends the life of the improvement into the future, doesn't make a significant dent in level of service. The new signalized intersection would improve slightly, the roundabout would improve significantly. As far as queuing, the minimum build would solve the worst problems, and it would be a project that would accommodate the use of the new Kenmar interchanges and make it so that those roundabouts can function suitably. It would not solve any of the queuing issues we have on northbound Ross Hill Road, because those elements are not part of the project. The new signalized intersection would improve queuing everywhere, the new roundabout would effectively eliminate queuing everywhere. We feel that the new signalized intersection and the new roundabout would both provide good improvements to safety, while the minimum build would be medium to good, again, recognizing that it doesn't address all areas of the intersection, but only some. In a similar vein, the non-motorized accessibility improvements in the minimum build would be medium, because ultimately we'd be addressing some problems, but not all, but maybe some of the more key problems. The signalized intersection and the roundabout would be, you know, good to fully to great, really, because it would improve the condition for all movements, for all users throughout. And then lastly is design life. This is something that we put together, and I will note that realistically, the amount of time that any of these project improvements would last is dependent on how much the city grows. So we tend to look at things with a growth factor of 1.5% per year, which is what the city's general plan calls for. I will note that the historic population growth since the 90s has really been more about six-tenths of a percent, so a little more than one-third of that actual number, but we still look at these things as if there's going to be a development boom, or the mill is going to take off, or the, you know, the neighborhood potential in the south area of the city would ultimately develop. That being said, staff kind of have a feeling that a minimum build signal alternative would probably be a project that could last 20 to 30 years in an average scenario. The new signalized intersection, 30 to 50 years, and the new roundabout, 50-plus years, given how well it treats the congestion issues out there. So I'm happy to speak a little bit more. I wanted to provide the council an opportunity to have some questions or have some public comment, or, you know, ultimately, the thing staff are asking tonight is that the council approve the project study report, if there's no other alternatives or ideas that you would like staff to explore. And in parallel with that, what we would be looking for, if the council is comfortable going in this direction this evening, is a motion that was accompanied by the council identifying a preferred project alternative for staff to move forward with, trying to find funding for and to move a project forward. So with that, I will relinquish the floor here for a minute, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. There's a lot of information in there. I don't know about making a decision on the alternative right now, but I would look and see if anybody has any questions or comments for Brendan.
That's a lot of information.
Yeah.
It would be nice if we could do the roundabout, but is that, you know, I mean, do we need to settle for something that's the basic? Which, you know, kind of what's your opinion?
Yeah, so...
Between those two?
So if you, staff's recommendation at this time would not be to move forward with the full build signalized alternative. It's too expensive, it doesn't provide the best level of service and queuing into the future, and with expense comes uncertainty that it would ever be installed in the first place. So I think that alternative, while we needed to explore it, is not really one worth taking beyond this stage in the game. I think the city's best alternatives, from a staff perspective, but from a community perspective too, would either be to pursue the minimum build alternative or the roundabout. The difference being that the minimum build alternative would have to be considered an interim solution throughout the greater sense of time, because while it might last 20 to 30 years, while it might last 40 years, at some point, it's going to become congested and ultimately be operating at a substandard level of service and a substandard level of queuing as well. The advantage of pursuing a project like that at this time is it's within the fundable capacity of the city. The last funding cycle, the city was able to acquire $2.6 million in STIP money, and ultimately, I know the... ultimately, I know the project estimate said 2.9 to deliver this, but we feel like that might be a little bit on the conservative side, and ultimately, it is somewhat realistic that the city could pursue funding and have that improvement built, the minimum, the minimum build improvement, within the next five years. That's pretty realistic, if not very realistic. The roundabout, not so much. It is a better and more robust improvement in the long term, and staff feel that through the course of time, that's ultimately the solution for this location, given all the other constraints. That's the thing that's going to solve the problem well into the future. The likelihood that that is funded and completed in the next five or 10 years is significantly less, just because it is outside of the regional capacity to fund something outside of seeking a big external grant, which staff could do. It's just, you know, there's always uncertainty, and, you know, the council and the city are going to have to consider what the trade-off is to seek a project that might not happen because we can't fund it. In the meantime, still hoping and having development activities advance that continue to reduce the operations of the interchange. So as a long answer to a quick question, the roundabout and the minimum build, we believe, are the best alternatives, and it's really about deciding what is more important, something that can be delivered now, and then recognizing that that still has to be readdressed at some point in the future, or focusing on what the permanent solution is.
So how long do you think the minimum bill would build would last if the mill property gets built out?
I would think, I would think quite some time, and that's, so the growth rates we're projecting as part of the traffic modeling are aggressive, and they're from the general plan traffic model, which include development build out of the mill site. There are some wild cards in there based on like the assumptions of the types of businesses that would go into the mill site, but I think, right now, it would manage, it would manage that traffic load for some time into the future. It's hard to know without knowing exactly how that would shape up, though.
Thank you.
With the advent of much more horsepower and traffic signal controllers, and Josh and his computer and designing that intersection, that, there could be a way to accommodate either another left turn lane for northbound traffic coming off Ross Hill onto westbound Kenmar, because that's the big issue there, and getting the trucks, cars through off the freeway. There was a time when that thing, when the mills were running, and we didn't have the problems then that we have now, but, you know, they, they had the timing on that pretty well dialed in, and, but now, no matter how far we've gone, we end up with that giant queue going up the hill.
Yeah, and I will note, you know, just to be the precursor to going down this effort, in parallel, we have looked in detail if the signal timing or even some additional loops could be added ultimately to solve the issue. We looked at swapping lanes, or swapping which lanes are combined in the eastbound Kenmar movement. Ultimately, without physically adding more lanes in a signalized alternative, there's just no way to significantly improve it. And, you know, one of the big things that's caused to the congestion, especially in the northbound, well, there's two areas that have caused to the congestion on northbound Ross Hill Road. One is, of course, there's a number of additional schools up there now that are there that weren't there historically, so that's adding a lot to the traffic that's in that area, especially in the morning. And then also, Caltrans' closure of the Drake Hill on and off ramp there, that caused basically everybody who conventionally, you know, or some of which anyway, used to go down Drake Hill to get on and off the freeway, all now have to go to the Kenmar and Ross Hill Road intersection there, so.
Yeah, that's, that's the big constraint. I understand with the funding and what's the likelihood of actually completion, and it's just a real hard decision.
Yeah, and like I said, I recognize that too, and I personally felt very compelled to get this in front of you as quickly as we could, and that does not mean a decision has to happen right now in this setting, but now the information is in front of you, some of that is available, and the one thing I will say is, the, so long as, as staff in the city and the council are aware of what's going on here, and aware of some key timelines that are coming up, like the STIP cycle that's going to be coming up in six to eight months, there's no compelling reason a decision needs to be made at this time. You know, some more deliberation could happen, if you have any additional information you would like staff to bring back to you in regards to this to help with that decision, that could certainly be done. But I would make note that in October to November this year, the solicitations will go out for STIP funding, which is going to present the next and best opportunity to advance a portion of this project, whether that is seeking entirety of the funding to go with an improvement to the signalized intersection alternative, the minimum build that is, which could probably include construction funding in an ask under a typical STIP year. But it also could be funding request to do the environmental and engineering design for a roundabout alternative to keep that moving forward too. So either way, there's a pathway to advance the project. The key after that is just what is the next step, so.
The other thing is dropping the slip lane. That was probably more heavily used for trucks in the past than now, but there still is trucks, still is motor homes and such as that, and need to get that, if we don't have the slip lane, then we have a hard right, and I couldn't tell from your aerial pictures because of the shade and the brush, if you had read, changed the geometry of the corner there, or, it looks like you changed the geometry of the lanes.
Yeah, and that would have to be part of it, too. Again, this is very concept level, the drafting that's done there is to kind of show the proof and point and to support the modeling that's associated with it. In making that move and doing the reconfiguration as part of the engineering design, similar to what Josh had showed with the roundabout projects, there would be all the truck turning movements, the auto turn things, and everything else to support to make sure that we are still accommodating access for all the vehicular uses through the intersection, users through the intersection.
And it doesn't work out well if trucks have to make a right turn on Newburgh and Fortuna Boulevard. We have upgraded that traffic signal more than once. Do you have any?
I think it's a lot of information, and I don't know that I could, I mean, the minimum build is the ideal situation right now for funding and everything, but I don't know that I can make a decision on it yet.
With, I don't know what Josh thinks, but with the way traffic signal technology is going, things are a lot more adaptable now than they used to be. The controllers are much better, and, so if we went with the minimum build, what would our, would we still have options, say in five years, to make it work better for whatever intersection we can build there?
Hard to predict the future. But I think, I, but I think, absolutely, right? I mean, there could be some additional improvements, some incremental changes or improvements in the future, if there's some other things needed to adapt, so I think that is an option, it's something you could build off of.
Any consensus?
We don't have to make a decision now.
I know, I just was just asking if there was.
Mayor Johnson, you may want to go to public comment.
I was getting ready to. So if you don't have any more comments, we will go to public comment on this item. Seeing none at this time. Well, I'll still have access to you, I think, to ask questions.
I reckon that's true.
But what do you think?
I think I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the project study report for Kenmar and Ross Hill Road Intersection Improvement Project.
Second?
We have a motion and a second.
Voice vote.
Oh, it's a voice vote, okay, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, and we will be back with the preferred alternatives.
Excellent, and thank you for the time.
All right, moving on now to authorization to award the contract for wastewater treatment plant percolation pond rehabilitation project.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I unfortunately, fortunately, it's shorter but much less interesting, my presentation. It is for the percolation pond rehabilitation project. It's an annual project we do down at the wastewater treatment plant, where we remove the depleted drain rock and treat the subsurface to make it more permeable and then replace the drain rock. Like I say, this is a project that we have to do every year because of regulations that require that we do not discharge to surface water from May 15th through September 30th. One thing that happened this year in November, the river got unusually high, and it actually covered the ponds. During that time, as the water receded, we found there was some pretty, pretty substantial damage to the ponds. So we were a little concerned about this project being a bit more expensive than before. So anyhow, last Wednesday, the second, we opened the bids, we had two bids come in, which was a bit of a surprise, because we had five people at our pre-bid conference, so we expected more, but the Mercer Frasier Company came in at about $169,000, and Went Construction, who did the project last year, came in at about $99,500. So they were significantly lower, and actually about $12,000 less than they did the project for last year. So we're very, very happy to find that. With this, this is a pretty cookie cutter project, not a lot could go wrong when you're playing with rock, but just in case we like to have a contingency, so we put a 10,000, roughly 10,500 contingency on there, and so we would have a not to exceed contracted amount of 110,000. Financial impact, the wastewater treatment fund 550, we had budgeted $120,000 this year, so we are going to come in well under that. So with that, staff recommends council authorize city manager to enter into a contract with Went Construction in the amount of $99,372, and establish contingency funds, as is noted above, for a total contract of 110,000.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yep.
Comments? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to award the contract to Went Construction for $99,372, and establish a maximum contract amount of 110,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and other related documents.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. And now we can move on to declare the council's intent to levy the Fortuna Business Improvement District Assessment for fiscal year 2025-26, resolution 2025-07.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and council members. We have a two-parter tonight. We have the Fortuna Business Improvement Intent to Levy Resolution, and then we have an F-Bid ordinance. So with the intent to levy, on March 3rd, 2025, your council approved the F-Bid Annual Report for Fiscal Year 24-25. The annual report contained a recommendation to levy a simple flat assessment of $25 per business for fiscal year 25-26. There are approximately 660 businesses in Fortuna, and a flat assessment would generate approximately 16,500 annually. As a reminder, no assessment was levied in fiscal year 24-25. The resolution of intent must be adopted after the city council reviews and approves the F-Bid Annual Report, which again, you did on March 3rd. So the resolution of intent is the first procedural step required to levy the annual assessment. The resolution also provides public hearing notice, which will occur on April 21st, at which time business owners may submit written protests or oral protests at that public hearing. So the resolution of intent addresses the following: Boundary changes were not proposed, however, the dissolution of the benefit zones for a citywide benefit zone is proposed. It does not change the overall boundary of the F-Bid. A modification to the assessment amount is also proposed for the upcoming fiscal year from no assessment to a flat assessment of $25 per business. And the public hearing is noticed for April 21st, which is the date of the second regular meeting in April, and at the public hearing, written and oral protest to the F-Bid assessment may be made. And therefore, staff recommends the city council adopt resolution 2025-07, declaring the council's intention to levy the Fortuna Business Improvement District Assessment for Fiscal Year 2025-26, and set a public hearing date for April 21st, 2025.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from staff? Is there any public comment? I have one thing, I know that in the, it was a question as to what, there was a reference to as the money funding to be used for, as designated in the founding documents for F-Bid. Now, I know that at some time, I remember hearing that it's for entertainment, for insurance, for drawing, for musical events, to bring people into the, what used to be the core areas that will, that will not exist specifically anymore, but can we flesh that out a little bit?
It still is, those expenditures are still possible, they're just not dedic, there were certain pots of money dedicated to the core areas, and now it's a citywide benefit.
Right.
And so, yes, it could be, an applicant could come to F-Bid and ask for concert money or storage for their event hardware, so all of those things are still possible, that did not change.
As I know, like last year, I think, we used, some F-Bid money was used for transit during special events.
Yes.
And it's been used for insurance for downtown events to bring people in, so there is a variety of things.
Yes, variety.
All right. No public comment? Well, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-07.
Oh. Second, even though I don't necessarily agree with this, I'm going to second it.
So we have a motion and a second?
Sorry, it's a resolution, I'm going to read it.
Oh.
Resolution 2025-07, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, declaring its intention to levy an annual assessment for 2025-26 fiscal year for the Fortuna Business Improvement District, and fixing the time and place of a public meeting and a public hearing thereon, and giving notice thereof. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
A not happy yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right. We'll move on to proposed amendment of the Fortuna Business Improvement District Regulations.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and council members. So this is the second half of the F-Bid documentation and requirements that we need to move through. So the ordinance modification, it modifies the existing language in the Fortuna Municipal Code, and that includes dissolving the three existing benefit core areas, the downtown area of Redwood Village Shopping Center and Strong's Creek, and specifies those areas shall just be one core area, one business improvement district. It revises the section imposing the benefit assessment to- It revises the section imposing the benefit assessment to allow the council to set the method and basis for calculating the annual assessment for reauthorization required by Street and Highways Code. And it deletes certain definitional provisions that are no longer applicable to an annual assessment based upon a flat rate. The ordinance modifications also include revising the composition of the advisory committee to remove requirements for representation from the three core areas, and it further revises the composition of the advisory committee from seven to five, and specifies that four members shall be among the following industries: retail, professional, and service, hospitality, manufacturing, and/or wholesale, and one member should be a city council liaison. It also removes the requirement that certain funds be allocated to the three core areas, and instead provides that all funds raised within the district shall be used to promote the entire community. And it maintains the principal purposes for which the district was formed, which is consistent with your question from earlier, Mayor Johnson. So staff recommends introducing and conducting the first reading by title only of Ordinance 2025-774.
Okay. Is there any questions for, any public comment on this item? I see none. Close public comment. Get a motion.
Make a motion to introduce and conduct first reading by title only of Ordinance 2025-774.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Ordinance 2025-774, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, California, amending Chapter 5.40, Fortuna Business Improvement District of the Fortuna Municipal Code, and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay. Now we come to correction and modification to the selection and appointment of the city council vacancy.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and council members. So per California Government Code, Section 36512, the person appointed to the city council will hold the city council seat until the next general election in November 2026, not November 2028, as stated in the March 17th staff report. As you may recall, Mr. King provided his resignation on March 12th, and his term would have expired at the end of 2028. So the November 2026 election will, someone will obviously be appointed at that point in time or elected at that point in time, and then again in 2028, in order to maintain compliance with state law. In addition, after the March 17th meeting, it became apparent that there were some scheduling conflicts with the city council. And so the date for the interviews and selection for the vacant city council seat is now scheduled for Monday, April 21st, at 3:00 PM. And that concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for?
No.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Again, can we get a motion?
Make a motion to approve and ratify city council application deadline to noon on Friday, April 18, and notice, and hold a special public meeting to conduct interviews and selection on Monday, April 21st, 2025, at 3:00 PM.
Second.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right. And that brings us to our city managers' report.
Here I go again. All right, city council meetings, I, as just mentioned, we have a special meeting on Monday, April 21st, at 3:00 PM, and that will be to interview and select for the vacant city council seat. There is also a meeting at 6:00 PM on Monday, April 21st, for the city council. The Planning Commission meeting for April 8th has been canceled. The next Planning Commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 22nd. Measure E is Tuesday, September 16th, at 5:30 PM. The RCRPD meeting for May 7th has been canceled and is scheduled for Wednesday, June 4th, at 2:30 PM. And then F-Bid is April 22nd at 8:30 AM, and then again on July 22nd at 8:30 AM. And I'll just give you a brief update on RCRPD, since that's the pool project. The McLean Foundation is still waiting on soils reports for the site between them, on the McLean campus. And so once those come back, we'll help determine whether that's the appropriate site for a pool. The RCRPD board is still exploring an assessment, a property tax assessment, to help fund operations for the pool. And so that will all continue as, as things slowly move along, and hopefully it will pick up once we get those soils reports. But things are, are actually progressing. And that concludes the city manager's report.
Any questions for her at this?
Can you tell me those, the dates for those F-Bid meetings again?
April 22nd at 8:30 AM and July 22nd at 8:30 AM.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Does anyone have a future agenda item they'd like to? We'll come to council reports. Even if you don't have a report on it, you can still make a comment on your, okay, that comes to you.
Brendan, is this your last meeting?
This is, this is. It's actually my last day as well.
Well, I want to thank you for everything that you've done to the city, for the City of Fortuna. We've really appreciated you being here, and I wish you luck at your future job, and I hope you don't like it as much as you like us here. And I want to wish Mr. Diaz, our councilman member Diaz, happy birthday, and thank you for spending your birthday with us. We appreciate it. And I don't have anything else to report.
Okay. Well, I've got a couple things to report. While Brendan may be leaving, he's not out of my sphere of influence, you might say. Last HCOG meeting, we officially brought him on as our executive director, and I hope that you can do as good a job as you've done here, because you've done a bang-up job here. We've had projects come through, get completed, and as I brought up at the other one, your, one of your first projects here was probably one of the nastiest projects in traffic constraints and property impingement, and it was, he came through with flying colors. So thank you for that. And I don't have a lot more to report, other than that, I do have an HCOG meeting coming up, the third Thursday of this month, and I'll have more to report on that. And so with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.